Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our June 27, 2022 Select Board Meeting. I will call this meeting back into regular session at 7:03, and if everybody could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we'd like to invite a representative from the convenient MD Urgent Care and welcome you as a new business.
Welcome, everyone.
Thanks for the welcome. So just a quick overview, Community MD is an urgent care company based out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, with 34 different locations throughout Maine, New Hampshire, Massachusetts. The location next to the new Starbucks opens Wednesday, so keep that in mind for all your urgent care needs. We can do-
We hope nobody has to go.
Yeah. We can, there are a lot of things that we can do that people don't know that we can do, so feel free to give us a call or pop in, no appointment needed, saving you lots of time and money. And so my role is the Community Partnerships Manager, so I look for ways that we can integrate into the community. So I've already been in contact with Brick at the Youth Center, the Booster Club, baseball, North Andover Baseball. So we really looked for ways that we can give back and really integrate and be a pillar of the community. We also have a school nurse partnership program where we offer a lot of benefits to schools and youth, like free medical care, and we help facilitate free Epi pens and prescriptions and things like that. So we're excited to be in North Andover.
That's great. Could you just explain, though, because I think sometimes if people go to a center such as yours, there's a lot of things that you will not do. You refer them to the hospital. Could you, could you give us-
Sure.
Kind of a, give the public sort of an idea-
Yeah.
What, like if they're having what appears to be a heart attack, I'm assuming that-
Yes.
They're going to be set up.
A general rule of thumb is anything life or limb threatening, go to the emergency room. But we can do about 80% of what a standard emergency room can do. So we have onsite x-ray and EKG, we can do complete blood count, we have, and we have a wide range of healthcare professionals, too. We have physicians and nurses and radiation techs and just a broad, broad range.
So if it's, appears to be quite serious-
Yes, we would just, we would recommend-
Go to the hospital.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to delay. That's why I'm saying it.
No, certainly not. But we, but we are actually pretty proud to be able to do a lot onsite. We are, our transport rate to, to an emergency room is quite a bit below the, the industry standard, so we're pretty proud of that.
Thank you.
And just kind of to build on that, do you, can you go online to get wait times and that sort of-
Yes, yeah, I'm glad you asked. You can do exactly that. And you can check in online. It's not making an appointment, but if you're like, oh, I'm gonna head out the door and go, you can check, see the wait time, sign in, fill out some of the information ahead of time so that when you get there, you can just walk in and say, I'm here, here to be seen, and you can get right in, hopefully in just a couple of minutes.
Great. Anybody else?
Did we mention the Merchants Association? Did I miss that?
You were aware that there's a-
[laughing]
An active North Andover Merchants Association? And did we talk about that already?
No, we did not, no.
No, okay. So there's an active North Andover Merchants Association, and there's a lot of opportunities there. They have, you know, we have events on the common at least once a year. We have, what else do we have? We have the Knights, the Shining Star. There's a bunch of events there that you can get involved with, with, through the merchants. Also, National Night Out is a big event to get, you know, get your name out there, so-
Sure.
They're, they're a great resource to, to talk to and get information from.
Very confident with the website, so.
Yeah. I think one of my colleagues has been in touch, but either way, we, you know, we're looking to establish a relationship with, with all the different community organizations, so.
They also made a donation, which we'll be accepting tonight for $500 for physicals for students.
I saw that, yeah, that's great.
I think we accepted the last meeting, actually. We were ahead of you.
I, I-
Oh, there's another donation. Well, there's another donation.
I was getting over COVID last time, so.
[laughing]
Yeah. Anything else?
Welcome, and thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Morgan. Take care.
All right. We will move on to public comment. Do we have any public comments from the room? All right. And they will move on to our governmental reports. We have Mark Capadona from Colonial Power to talk about the aggregation program.
My name's Mark Capadona, Five Mountain Royal Ave, Marlborough, Mass. I'm here to talk to you about the municipal aggregation program in, in North Andover. So there's been quite a buzz. We know that because there's been about 1,000 opt-outs, which we think is perfectly acceptable, make no mistake about it. Current rates in the electricity market are just through the roof, and as bad as this summer is, this coming winter, I'm here to tell you, is going to be worse. That doesn't necessarily mean your rate's going to be worse, but with national grid, we're expecting in the mid 25 cent range, just unheard of, like 11 cents higher than it's almost ever been before. So we're talking about electricity through national grid and the supply portion of your bill. We started this way back in, actually, October of last year, and rates have continued to escalate since. Actually, it was March of last year. Been doing this for about 20 years, never seen a run like this in my life. We're currently in a three-month contract right now, from July right through October. And the good news is, all we did was take as little as we possibly could, because the medicine is very strong right now. The current rate is going to be 19.1 for North Andover residents until then. The hope is, over the next few months, we'll find a much more palatable rate for everyone here, as we have in the past. There's about 8,400 meters that have saved about $2 million in the past, and we're hoping to get back on the, I'm certain to the fact, the aggregation program will have a lower rate than basic service this coming, this coming winter. The problem is, is we're trying to find a rate that delivers stability and savings that you guys have enjoyed for the last two years. When we get there, I'm not certain, the market has sold off ever so slightly, but we're not seeing the, the winter come down yet, so we're, we're hoping that Mr. Putin comes to his senses and we can, might be able to settle some things in the, you know, in the Ukraine so that all the energy prices come down. I can tell you that in the states, we are starting to, not that it's gonna make people happy, but we're starting to produce more carbon, which will help everyone with their gas, electricity, propane, oil prices in the future. We're not there yet, though, unfortunately. I came tonight to answer any questions you might have, but where we are, where we're going, what we're trying to get done.
If, if Bo doesn't mind, I'd also love to quickly run through the presentation that we did on cam to show people how to opt out.
Sure.
Okay. So if you want to ask questions first, I can start setting that up.
Okay. I'll open this to the board.
Do you really feel as though Mr. Putin has, has been driving these numbers?
But believe it or not, the way actually energy prices work in ISO New England, that's, that's our distribution, our, our overall, up here, we have a natural gas capacity issue, not that anyone wants to hear that, but unfortunately, we don't have enough natural gas in the wintertime to heat our homes and generate the electricity that we need. So we compete with Europe for LNG. Because of the Jones Act, we're not, we're not able to get LNG to come from the south up here. So right now, most of our LNG that we have in the wintertime, when we don't have enough gas in the system, comes from Trinidad, and unfortunately, Europe is getting shut out from a natural gas issue. So we're currently, right now, the price is around $33 a therm. To put that in terms you may understand, over $350 a barrel for oil. That's the equivalent with the heat rate. So to give you an idea, that's why prices are just so steep. Up in New Hampshire, they did the procurement, and in January, their variable rate was 48 cents a kilowatt hour for ever source. So just to give you an idea, that those prices are out there in the marketplace, and it's, it's going to be a long, cold winter.
I would just make the point that we do have a lot of fossil fuel here in the United States. That's why the thing with Putin really didn't interfere with the, the money, so I just was confused by your comment.
Believe it or not, and that would make sense, other than we do have a natural gas capacity issue, there's, so we're not on the main trunk, we're on a line called Algonquin, and Algonquin does not have enough to supply the needs of ISO New England.
Okay.
So how they do that is through LNG in the wintertime.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So when somebody opts out, one thing I think, there's some questions that came up around how long before they actually see that on their bill, that they've been opted out and, you know, they will no longer get the aggregated charges and go back to national grid.
So we've been working with the supplier. The customer, as soon as they call, we're, we're issuing the, what they call a drop transaction, so that drop would be done that day. Unfortunately, the system is a little antiquated. It's, we can only opt people out at their next meter read, but if they call on Monday, literally Monday, we're issuing the drop, and most people that have opted out so far, I think there's about 200 accounts that were early cycles, but most everyone that got in should see those opt-outs hit immediately. So they'll still have the rate on, they'll still say, that will be the last account that'll have the first point or the North Andover aggregation, but there'll be accruing at national grid's rate, which is slightly above yours. By slightly, I'm saying to you, your rate was 10.8, and national grid this summer is 11.4. So it's just slightly, but you will, that rate is available for anyone. And remember, come the wintertime, or, or fall, late fall and November, there'll be a new rate here, and I think people that have opted out are certainly gonna want to take cover from what's coming this winter, if they opted out. Just remember that, that's all. They don't have to, they can, you know, it's their choice. That's what you've done, you brought them a choice. But I do want to let, let everyone know, they could opt back in without fear of penalty.
And how long will they opt in take?
Again, it's gonna be a, a single meter read, we'll be working, I don't know if the current supplier will be the winning supplier, but we'd be working with whoever that supplier is so that they know.
The vast majority of our meters are actually read at the end of July-
That is correct.
Which is to our benefit.
Right.
That is correct. I think there was like 200, cycle one or two meter reads. Everything else, about 84, or would be 8200 left, shouldn't have any trouble with anyone that has opted out so far, zero.
And how, how many options do you have as far as getting rates, you know, before the winter? You know, how, you said not the, it might not be the supplier, right?
Correct. So there's about six suppliers right now that, that serve what I'll call Massachusetts aggregations, that we've vetted and so forth, so those suppliers will be competing for price. Did you want names? I, I don't know.
No, oh, no. I was just, I didn't know if there was like 200 or like four.
So there's like five or six.
Yeah.
That will be bidding. And there's, there is a website, but the Attorney General has said that the individual customer hasn't really made out on those individual websites, but it is called Mass Wish, and people could go there shopping if they, if they wanted to take a look. I, I wouldn't not advise that.
Yeah. I would think power and numbers, right?
That is correct.
And then how, I don't know, it's just a curiosity question. How come you're able to negotiate such a better rate than national grid?
So believe it or not, national grid isn't out there in the marketplace looking to create the best rate for you. The Department of Public Utilities tells them to go out twice a year, and they, they perform that to a T. And, but that doesn't mean they're looking for, so just two years ago, when we signed the contract, fantastic rate, grabbed it for 24 months, so forth. National Grid, even at the best of times, they can't take advantage of that. Even at the worst of times, they, they still buy the exact same amount that they need. See what I'm saying? So right now, I, I think the, the town made a wonderful choice, they just went short, they didn't buy something for 24 months again, meaning, hey, we only have this rate for three months. Let's knock on wood here, the rates continue to come down, so forth. National Grid wouldn't have done that. National Grid has no choice.
It's very confusing. Especially when you're trying to explain it to people that it just, and you just say, this one you'll get this, and this one you'll get that, so, yeah. It is, it's confusing to the public, I will say.
If they have any questions, they could always call Colonial Power Group, 866-485-5858, extension one. All we do is municipal aggregation in Massachusetts, and those are the only questions we've been asking for 15 years. If that's what you hired us to do, we're happy to do it. Explain exactly what's going on.
And they will continue to watch the rate for us over the next couple of months, and there may be an opportunity, who knows, to do an extend and blend. We just didn't want to do that prematurely, so. Okay. I'll run through this really quickly. You can jump in and help me at any point.
Absolutely.
All right. So this is on North Andover Cam as well, but, and it's quick, I promise, but just a few quick things, and we already explained the program, but as we know, the new rate is not favorable to the town. The national grid rate is lower by about eight cents. We shot, we signed the short-term contract, and we're just gonna show you quickly how to opt out. And so this is a sample bill that Denise sent to us. If you have national grid as your supplier, you only have two columns on your bill. If you are participating in the aggregation program, you have three columns on your bill. So if you have three columns on your bill, you know that you may want to think about opting out, that we're encouraging you to opt out. When you look down at the bottom of your bill, where it says "Supply Services," it will say "First Point," and that's how you know that their supplier is First Point and not National Grid. Okay? On your meter, on your bill also says when your meter is read, and so that will give you an idea of when, if you're opting out at a good time or not. So were you in that first group of 200, or are you in that group of 8,000 that actually get read at the end of the month? This is the notice, the postcard that was mailed last week to all homes and businesses. So this has both the phone number to opt out, so that's 888-875-1711. It also has the website to opt out, which is colonialpowergroup.com/north-andover. And you can opt out and opt in at any time. It's really easy. The website's really easy to use, so you just click on it, it takes you to it, you click on the little orange button, takes less than 30 seconds, we've been processing them for people in the office. It's really easy. If you need help, just come by the office, and we're happy to help you with that. And then this is a quick-
Make sure you have your bill.
Make sure you have your bill.
Okay.
Right. You need your bill, because you need your number.
Yep.
Thank you.
One question, Robert. All those notices went to everybody with an electric bill, correct?
Everybody who's part of the program.
Not just homes.
Right, everyone who's part of the program.
Every single person, every meter that was part of the program.
Every, every meter, right.
That's correct.
Because I think renters were, were concerned that they weren't gonna get theirs.
If they participated in the program, we have the whole list. Every single customer that's participating in the program got a card.
Perfect, yes, thank you.
Businesses as well.
Businesses as well.
And we reached out to the Merchants Association, make sure they had a copy of the notice, and we also made a really simple notice, which we've posted places, including online, because, you know, this is a lot to read, and it made it a lot easier. Although, we appreciate it. And then finally, Selectman Valancourt had asked us, you know, historically, has this ever happened before? Has the rate ever been higher? And so Denise helped us go through and look at it. So you can see, the blue lines are the national grid rate, and the red lines are the North Andover rate historically, and there has been times in the past where either the national grid rate and the North Andover rate were even, or where the national grid, the North Andover rate was a little bit higher, so like it happened in May to October of 2020. But it's certainly never happened to this degree, which is why we've been communicating so much about this. And that's it.
I did want to add, the one reason we had had the discussion, if you were to, to suspend the program, it requires you to go back through, and it's about a two or three-year process with the department, so it would leave you out of the market at maybe one of the worst times. So I, I believe, once it's made the correct choice, the program's still viable, because if you, you can end the program, the issue is, it requires you to go back through before you get started again.
Right, back into town meeting, which is how we ended up here in the first place, was an active town meeting.
Back through-
That is correct.
And back through DPU. So town, if you remember, town meeting voted in 2017, we didn't get our DPU approval till 2019.
Right.
So it's, the DPU processing takes quite a long time.
What, just weeds, you don't have to go back to town meeting. The vote stands, but we would have to go back, hang the plan, so forth and so on.
Yeah.
But you would not have to go back to town meeting.
Just back to DPU, which is time-consuming.
Very, time-consuming.
Okay. I think that's important, too. I think people were asking that it was, how did we get here? Right? And we got here because we decided at town meeting to do this.
Correct.
And then-
I think the most confusing thing, and I might even say it wrong, is what does "opt out" mean? If you don't do anything, you're opted in, even though you never signed anything. That was the thing that people just couldn't get. I never signed anything. I said, I know. So you're opted in, so now you gotta opt out, and it just, it's, it is confusing.
And that's the law, right? The law requires that everyone in the program be opted in, and then they have to choose to opt out. It's not something that we selected to do.
That's correct. 164, 134, it's required in the law that it's an opt-out program run by the town.
So when, when you're telling people, it is, you just say, now, just listen to me for a minute. It is, it's, it's like, I never signed anything. I said, yep, so you're opted in.
Right.
But, um, but what's, once you kind of go through that-
Not too different than a tax bill or a water bill or a trash bill, right? You never sign anything, just the town makes those decisions on your behalf.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions, comments?
No, thank you for being here.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we are gonna ask Chief Gray to come up and give us an update on the community policing program.
I was asked to come in just to give you an update as far as a new unit we started recently. I know the town manager's been talking about it. With the help of the deputy town manager, we got this stuff through the contracts and negotiations, and formed a unit. Essentially, it was our old traffic unit that for 20 years conducted traffic enforcement, and after the way policing has been perceived over the last few years, we wanted to make a, a positive change, sort of a shift. And so we came up with the command staff, and I came up with an idea, mirroring some of the other communities we have around us, to create a community police officer program or a community impact unit, which basically is gonna give officers that are out in the streets handling sector calls, the opportunity to continue handling those calls, jumping from call to call and doing what they need to do. And if a resident or a business or a problem arises that requires extended investigation time, whatnot, you know, we have a unit now that we can focus on those particular issues and devote more time than a sector car that's gonna be bouncing around from call to call. That, and also visiting, you know, community events and stuff like that, where we can actually be seen in a positive sense, as opposed to a negative, you know, and someone's in crisis when they call the police, it's never a good time to, to meet us for the first time. So I have a lot of, a lot of hope that this is gonna be a great unit. I've had a lot of support from the town manager, the deputy town manager. I worked extensively with, with Dee to go over through the contract negotiations and the job descriptions, and now we're up and running. We've had a little bit of a snag. We've had one catch COVID and one has an injury, but we're moving onward, and we're looking for some really positive results, and I'll keep you appraised of how everything goes. Any questions?
I am seeing the, the newer officers, they're, they're slightly different uniform, different color, out and about, which is great.
Yes, they're, they're making a huge impact already. We're really happy with the academy that they go to in April, and, you know, that the quality of officer that we've gotten over the last few years has just been top-notch, so we're really lucky.
Russ, I think this, this speaks to the expansion of community services in general.
Right.
And what a municipality does in terms of connecting and helping the residents-
Without a doubt.
-has really shifted, and fortunately, we can spend more resources on supporting the community as opposed to just sort of the protection sort of piece of it.
Exactly.
And I think that's, I think that's a great recognition, because that's part of the reason why people like this community and choose it.
Right. I agree with you. So we're looking for some really positive things over the next few years.
Excellent.
And the other piece, too, is you have the community resource officers in the schools, right? Is that part-
There, so we have the school resource officers, but during the summer months, they become community police offing, police officers-
Yeah.
-and augment the unit. So we're gonna have a lot of people out there that, you know, three or four throughout the summer, unless people get injured or hurt again.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
They do. It's, it's, it's really coming a long way as far as rebuilding the image we want to portray to the town.
And they definitely recognize Gibbs, so.
We'll talk to Gibbs.
Right, right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have a date for National Night Out yet?
First Tuesday, yeah, first Tuesday in August, so we're already getting, planning on that. Probably the middle school again, since we have, the space is gonna be untouched, right? Yeah, so, plan on that. Onward.
This is our subject. Thank you so much. Next, we will invite our Youth and Rec Director, Rick Gorman, to give us an update on everything that's happening, one successful day under the books, in the books.
Yeah, it's been a long day. We started at 8 o'clock this morning. Demi is gonna, we're gonna do a quick PowerPoint presentation. We won't bore you too much, but want to kind of give an overview, especially for some of our newer Select Board members that may not know actually really the history of it. Before we actually put up the, yep, we can start with that, I want to actually introduce the staff. I think it's really important. I have had various staffs over 34 years, and this, this group we have right now is definitely the top three staffs I've ever had. So to my immediate left, handling the technology tonight is our Assistant Director, Demi Marsh. And then we have over here our newest employee, Cam White. Cam is our Social Programs Coordinator. And our Adventure Recreation Coordinator is Lauren Sanford. And our Support Services Coordinator is Asia Valdez. Also not here tonight is an interesting partnership we have with the Town Hall. Our Administrative Assistant, Jen Battersby, works for us part-time and works at the Town Hall part-time. So it's actually been a win-win for two departments, and obviously, she's got young kids at home tonight. So that's my staff, very proud of them, and it's been a brutal two years with COVID in trying to run a youth center, and I'm proud to say we've never closed. We've been able to operate despite everything. We've used DKC's for word of pivoting, and we've been pivoting now for like 27 months, and we're doing well. So we're gonna run through a quick PowerPoint for you. Demi put this together with some great pictures. A lot of people don't know, but this is our 34th year as a department. The first year, we were a pilot program, had one year to prove ourselves. I think Rosemary is probably the only one that remembers that directly, and we, we had a good first year, and the town actually made it the Youth Services Department. And at some point in time, when Bill McAvoy retired, we took over the Recreation Department, and that's why our name is the Youth and Recreation Department. Started as a one-room office in the former community center, for people that have been here a long time. Pretty much, we reenacted the thrift shop and the Red Bond with the new building that we had right now. 93 to 99, we raised $2.5 million to build the Joseph Herman Youth Center, and we opened in July 2000. Put in perspective, that $2.5 million, Melissa is helping us put a 5,000-square-foot addition on the youth center in the upcoming years, and it's gonna cost us over $6 million to And it's going to cost us over $6 million to put 5,000 square feet. So that's the difference in construction over 20 years. So we've actually been open 22 years and our program services now serve over 3,000 youth per year. As I introduce the staff, that's a good-looking crew there who do so much for our kids in town here. Membership drop-in, this is the, pretty much the basic. We have about 600 plus this year and we have, we're geared more to middle school through high school. And I'll just describe it as middle school uses it as a clubhouse. High school uses it as participating in activities. So like high school kids would come to a leadership program and leave, work out and play basketball and leave. Middle school kids never leave. They're there at 2:30 and then we're kicking them out at 5:30. We're open Monday through Fridays and on Saturdays, we actually open up in the afternoon for the incoming, the fifth graders who will be coming members as sixth graders to kind of give them an idea of what it is. They have access to the entire building, 18,000 square foot building plus 4.5 acres of land, which we pretty much control on the whole area there. And obviously, as you've driven through the old center, you've seen, especially on beautiful days, what the kind of activity is going on there. Support services, this is where Asia's position comes into place. We continue to think this is the lifeline of our program. When I was first hired in 1988, I was hired to work with what people termed in 1988 as at-risk kids. My first thing I said to North End over in 1988 is all kids are at risk. So I additionally worked with a lot of kids, a lot of kids who were in drug and alcohol facilities, kids who were involved with, you know, Chuck's department, with the police department. We dealt with a certain type of kid. And then over, obviously, over the last three decades, we have serviced all types of kids. But we still, this is part of our program that never gets the press due to confidentiality and everything else. We run support groups. We have a Thanksgiving drive, a holiday gift drive, which is just an amazing thing this town puts on. We provide resource guides. We collaborate with the NA Parent Resource, the CCI, the DEI, the Tria, and all the other committees in town that try to provide services. We run empowerment programs, Young Men's Group. We have a mentoring program we run and obviously we collaborate with the North End Public School on a lot of things, but what we're most proud about is we are an all-inclusive facility and we're collaborating with the North End Public School Special Education Department. Social recreation programs, Cam is probably the person most people see in the afternoon. He kind of runs the building, but this is just what I talked about. This is everything we do here and it's not a rec facility. So if you think it's just basketball, you're missing the picture. We are doing everything from yoga to chess to woodworking, music programs. We have a pickleball program, but as your next speaker will be telling, we're the second best age group in pickleball. We're not as good as the senior citizens, but next year we will get revenge. So those are a lot of the social recreation programs. We run hundreds of them a year. Adventure programs, this is where Lauren, Lauren is our one staff member that's out of the building more than anybody else. And you'll see her around town with all the different things we're doing, biking, geocaching, rock wall, ropes course. We have a nice ropes course in the town forest, snowshoeing, fishing, kayaking, skiing, archery, disc golf, trying to expose kids to other things than just sitting on your phone and on the computer. Our leadership programs, we're probably most proud of also is at the high school level, we have a freshman sophomore youth council, junior senior youth council. We have the MBP mentoring program. We have a program called Adventure Leaders. We have a program called Core Four, which works with the other neighboring communities of Andover Youth Services, the Merrimack Valley YMCA, as well as the Methuen YMCA. And in the middle school, we start, I'm young, we have a number of community service groups called night work, next man up and step up. Our special events, you know, youth appreciation day, Demi puts on a phenomenal team job fair every year. We are the people that have pretty much put on the very successful Matthew Hardy Mitro Classic and Demi is one of the leads on that. That's been one of the things that we've taken over and it's just a great community event. The Corvair Youth Leadership Summit, and as we mentioned, the Senior Center versus Youth Center Pickleball Tournament. Under Dee's leadership, we have been forced to work together with our elder and it's been great. We've run a couple of different programs. I think you're probably going to hear it in the next, when Kathy talks about it a little bit, but it's a really nice intergenerational stuff. Best summer ever. This is probably what we're known for the most and I love it, but I don't want to forget the other nine months. But during the summer, it is crazy. Teachers went on vacation last week. We geared up for the next craziest nine weeks you're ever going to see. Summer Fun Sergeant, Summer Fun Drumming. We had over 700 slots sell out in eight minutes on April 4th. I think that's a testament to what we do and what we put out. Sports and Rec Program is our boys', middle school program. Girls Got Game is our girls' middle school program. We did the Joseph Walsh Basketball League, field trips and many, many week-long programs throughout the summer. And then obviously Stevens Pond. And we are back open. Things are great down there. Hope you get a chance to go by. There are a lot of new additions. Thanks to Lori Burzloff, we were actually able to, and the community preservation, we have a lot of different things, a brand-new playground, we have new picnic tables, umbrellas. It just really looks good down there. Next week, we'll see the return of the children shows, which draw over 300 people every Tuesday and Thursday. And then the Sunday night concerts, again, draw between two and 400 depending on who the act is. We just want to do our collaboration. Remember, the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center, Inc. was established in 1993 to help raise funds in a partnership to build the youth center. In 2000, when they built, they took a well-deserved three-year rest and then they came back into business. And their whole thing is to continue to try to support our department. And that's, they do it through the annual Night to Shine Auction, the annual fund mailing, a golf tournament. And we're allowed to every year write an annual grant request for things that we need that probably wouldn't be on the top of, you know, our operating budget. And we get between $30,000 and $50,000 a year from the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center. And a lot of it is stuff like new ping-pong tables, new sports equipment and things like that, but, and we just couldn't operate without them. They also are involved with financial assistance. The auction, if you've been there, you know, we raise over 100 people, raise their hand to adopt a kid that can't pay for it because we do have an enormous amount of kids that, I know we live in an affluent town, but we have many kids that can't afford the $125 a year. So again, a big shout out to the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center. And last but not least, we, we probably, with the exception of North End of Moms, I think we are the most popular, I don't think we'll ever be as popular as North End of Moms, but we're pretty darn close. But those are the addresses you can get us. Our website, we have a very active website that we keep up to date. But obviously, we look at it as three ways. Facebook is our way we keep in contact with our parents. Twitter is the way we keep in touch with our peers, whether it be the school department or the town hall, all the different groups that have it. And then Instagram, that's for the kids. They want to see the pictures themselves. So it's, it's been a great 34 years. I think we're going to continue to grow. We have, as Melissa and Dee and I are talking, we will have some expansion down the road, much-needed expansion that will house drama, music, as well as an academic area. Those are the big areas we'd like to do. It's tough to do homework while kids are playing basketball. So those are some of the areas we try to look on that. We are looking, as, as I start to wind down my long career here, I am working with Dee and Melissa on, you know, a transition over the next few years when that actually takes place because for me personally, would love to see a smooth transition to keep what's going on here that this town has built. We are, and you as the select board, need to understand and appreciate, we are one of the few municipal agencies that has a full-blown youth center and youth services programs. Andover's the closest, but they modeled it after us. Amesbury has a little bit of one, but most towns, Dee and Melissa live in Danvers, they have what I would call smaller type of recreation programs. Nothing on the expansion that we have here. And that's been a commitment from our community to not only build a youth center, but to support, support us for all these years. So with that said, I'll take any questions before we let you move on.
One thing that you forgot to talk about too, or maybe didn't forget but didn't talk about was the number of kids that you also employ that are high school and college kids from North Andover over the summer. And you give them leadership skills as well. You give them skills working with young kids and they, and you give them employment for pretty much their entire, you know, high school.
Your daughter was one of the best ones we had.
Yeah, well, thank you. But yeah, it really.
So we had 150 kids this year. This is the third year in a row we're at 150. The last two years, I'll be honest with you, it was more COVID-driven. We had to have more staff. Right now, it's based on those eight minutes of selling out we had to hire, but it's all North Andover kids. And it's what's most impressive at this point in time, you know, Demi, who started out as a summer fun employee, 98% of the kids were summer fun kids that are now working for us. And that's pretty cool. The other 2% is basically kids that maybe moved into our community after summer fun. So it's kids that have bought into that, the leadership ability they have. We just finished an eight-hour training with them last week. They're great kids. We don't pay them a ton. As Melissa and Dee know, we're in a three-year place to even get them up to minimum wage. And we're doing that, but these kids do it for the love of the job, the love of kids and their love for the community. And I think what we leave them is when they leave, they, they truly value working with kids and give them back to this community. I shared in the training last week, I have a former summer fun worker, 45 years old, just sold his company for like $10 million or something. And he was calling me to tell me that, but he said, I still, as successful as I am, the best job I ever had was being a summer fun worker. So I think it kind of gives you a perspective of what those kids get. And it's great for us to see. We just said goodbye to Jake Walinski tonight, who's been only our second employee, been accepted to, and is leaving for the U.S. Naval Academy tomorrow. So I think we have great kids, but I think we have great kids in North Andover and we hire all types of kids too. We hire kids that are the higher achieving kids that you see on the dean's list and, you know, all your athletes. And we, we hire some of the quieter kids that have more other skills that other people don't have. So it's still, to this day, I think I have the greatest job in the world and it's been fun for 34 years.
Because of all the, the rising costs that we were just talking about a few moments ago with, you know, with fuel costs and everything else, are you finding that you have more of a need to get kids who just can't afford to get into the program or?
So our biggest thing is.
Same point in Stevie's pond.
So most people do a really good job of reaching out to us, but we are trying to find the ones that are pretty proud and don't want to reach out. So we have a great relationship with our guidance counselors at the middle school in particular to kind of find out who those kids are. That's kind of how we do our holiday drive also. So the kid is, we never wanted to turn any kid away from an ability to, to pay to come to us. And as I said at the auction, we had a nice story about a kid that, you know, he came to pick up his, his Christmas presents with his family and he said, I thought he was the craziest kid because he comes and he goes, hey, you got a pretty good operation going here. Okay. How old are you?
Was he the one who just sold his business for $10 million?
But after mean with, maybe this guy will. But he said, you know, I, I said, well, how old are you? And he said, I'm in the sixth grade. And he said, well, why, I said, why aren't you here? And he said, I have to be honest with you, my grandmother thinks you do so much for us at Christmas, she doesn't want to ask. So we just said to him, see you Monday. And he showed up on Monday and great kid. He shows up, my, my grandmother thinks I don't, shouldn't come by without a gift. So he brought like a computer game to donate to the thing. But those are the things we're trying to track, the kids that maybe families are too proud to don't want an extra assistance. We don't question it. We don't start asking for, you know, you know, utility bills and everything that you have. These are all North Andover kids and we should be taking care of our North Andover kids.
As a parent, one of those kids that never goes home, I just want to tell you all like how, I don't know, you're, you're heroes in our community and the people that you hire are and it's just your impact. I want you to know how appreciated you are and that's.
I appreciate you saying that. I mean, this is like, Melissa and Dee have heard me say this. This has been a brutal two years for this staff right here. I couldn't have done it without them and they don't get paid a ton of money and they, it's been hard to come to work every day and they continue to do it. And I think they do it because they love you kids.
So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. I had two happy campers today, so. I had one soaking wet and one that was partially dry, so.
You took the words out of my mouth. Hopefully, very tired.
Tired, yes, tired. They were happy. It is, you guys are a gem in town and we, we know how important it is that you are here. So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Continuing with updates, we are going to ask our relatively new elder services director, Kathy Schelp, to come up and talk about the senior center and elder services that are happening.
Also pickleball champions.
Oh, yes, sorry. Most important, pickleball champions.
Bias. Bias.
Oh, I think I can do. Can I change this? Go to Chromecast, do you mind?
You absolutely can. I just don't know how to do it, just my eye plug it in.
I'm hopefully, I'm doing it right.
Wow, that senior center got really good.
It's not giving, well, it's not giving me the. So we're going to plug in because it's not giving me.
Kathy's been more than a year. How long has it been? It's been exactly a year now?
Almost exa, yeah, a little over, like two weeks over here. And I really, I will tell you, before, before I interviewed, one of the draws to come here was the youth center because of the possibilities. And I really wished I didn't go after Rick today. Oh, I got to go back to PC. Sorry about that. All right, so there we are. I'm still getting used to Google that you guys use all Google here. So thank you so much for this opportunity to be here tonight. It's been, it's been a busy year, a busy year for, for us. So let me, so now I've got a little different approach than, than Rick did with what he did. I wanted to go over what we have accomplished this year and, and again, I do want to say the staff has been just amazing. They're not here tonight because we had a very busy weekend. They all worked all weekend, so I did not ask them to, to be here again tonight. So what do we do under governance? We actually, we started our accreditation process through the National Institute of Senior Centers. Only 2.5% of the senior centers in the country are accredited. We're going to be one of them. It takes a little more than a year to go through the entire process. And so we're hoping by the time when the new building opens, that we'll announce that we are an accredited senior center, nationally accredited senior center at the same time. And, and towards that, we've accomplished a SWOT analysis with the Council on Aging. We've updated and completed a rolling strategic plan. We have updated and our logo and with all our printed materials as well with our new logo. And we've established, we have listening sessions that were scheduled and invited people throughout the community to come in and talk to us about what they were looking for, what they considered were issues in aging, not just, you know, with the senior center itself, also what programs and services they'd be looking for, but their top issues as related to aging and how we can address them. The Council on Aging has been taking a strong role in advocacy and some of this information is going to help to lead their direction as well and, and also our strategic plan. So we have community outreach. We have a friendly visitor program, which is one of those programs as well that just goes unrecognized. And we have volunteers that do visit homebound seniors, some with mental health issues, some that do get out but just have no family. And we have friendly visitors that will go in and call them routinely, go and visit. During COVID, it was all phone calls. Now they have started back up and visiting and, and reaching out to those people. We did some podcasts with, with Cam, which a little studio is just amazing and the podcasts were so much fun. Bill Mitchell came and did one with us to talk about abatements and different exemption programs that seniors could apply for. We did one on housing. We did one on the cost of long-term care and how to pay for long-term care. And we did one also on caregiving and services. We've, through a grant, been able to get some translation services and translate our printed materials into Spanish and Russian, which we're just finishing up that process and we'll have them as well with new welcome packets that will be in both languages. We are making home visits our priority. When a senior calls and is having some concerns, our outreach counselor, outreach coordinator, Kala Alstrom, will go out and visit them. That way, we can lay eyes on, on their house and how they're living and other services that we can bring into them and start building a relationship with them. We've also created the Senior Community Intervention Team, which is includes elder services, fire, police, veterans, town nurse and community services. It's modeled after a program that I was associated with in my previous community. It has worked amazingly well. We're meeting once a month and we discuss some challenges that we are each seeing within our own departments with residents and talk about how we can collaborate to, to meet their needs. So programs, we have reallocated grant monies. Not long into the fiscal year, one of we, one of our part-time employees retired. So that money that paid her salary was through a formula grant, which is from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. We reallocated that money to pay our exercise instructors. So now we can offer all our exercise classes for just a requested donation of a dollar class. And we've seen participation grow because of that. It is my goal that we'll model ourselves after the library system, that everything that we offer will have no fee to it, that we'll be able to do that. And I do think as we see prices go up and everything and the inflation happening, it's going to become more and more important that we're able to do that. We had two intergenerational programs with the youth center this year. The pickleball tournament is a famous pickleball tournament. Was really, so much fun. The seniors did win and took home the trophy and, but it was a lot of fun. It was fun to watch them play with the kids. It was, the seniors were instructing the kids. The kids play all the time, but they don't necessarily follow the rules. So then we had a tournament and they had to follow the rules. And so it was a little bit of a transition, but it worked great. It was just a really a fun and upbeat afternoon. We also had a documentary screening. So between Rick and I, we both handpicked people from the senior community and from the youth community. And we watched a documentary called Lives Well Lift. It's on Amazon. I highly recommend that you watch it. And the documentary itself talks, it's people that talk about their lives, about resilience, the crisis they faced in lives and how they got through them. So we watched it together with the kids at that amazing theater at the Historical Society and then talked about it. And it was just awesome. There, there is a picture up there of everyone and you can see them looking each other. There were some really wonderfully touching moments that happened during it. Seniors had told stories themselves of challenges they faced. Some of the women were talking about how they couldn't apply for a credit card without their husband's or father's signatures on it. And then when they got married, then they were not allowed to have it. I think the girls were shocked by that. Or the women that couldn't get mortgages and, and talked about loss and, and how people got through it. It was just, I think, a great experience. And the, the seniors and the kids as well, who talked about it for a lot. And we would like to make that an annual program. Oh, let me go back. Sorry about that because I didn't finish. Oh, I don't know how to go back. I'm in Google. Oh, jeepers. All right, now can I talk? All right, there we go, that's it, I can start all over again. New program, so we added a pickleball program with the youth services, not long after I got here, one of the first things I did was go to Rick and ask him, can we use the building during the day for pickleball? He gave us two mornings a week and the pickleball program is just going really strong and, um, what's been really wonderful about it is the relationships, these people started playing together, they didn't know each other and developed relationships and now they play off-site, um, they were really shocked, they had to leave during the summertime and turn that center back over to the youth, but they did it begrudgingly and are just waiting and waiting and waiting for the pickleball courts to come in publicly, we do get told all the town, that we're the only town around that doesn't have outdoor pickleball courts and, um, but that they are coming and up in the picture up there, we're actually playing outside, uh, Rick put a court up, one court up, excuse me, I'm so sorry, and the basketball court and, uh, so we, we put two courts up and played outside of the youth center. We started.
Can you take one of the tennis courts and, because the kids are at school.
So, we actually are working with the schools and, and, and they're gonna be.
Maybe even two of them.
On the schools, that we can't put the lines on it and the tennis, uh, the tennis, uh, the nets are up for tennis, they're a little higher, a little different, but they're making do.
Great.
And working, pickleball players will play in a parking lot, if you, if you gave them the space to do it, they, they don't, they don't care.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, so, so they're making do until, till we get in there. Um, we started a bone builders class, uh, new exercise class, uh, working with RSVP, uh, craft classes, movies and documentaries, they were all programs that we surveyed residents, uh, at the beginning of the year and some programs that they were asking for that we put into place. Uh, this past weekend, we just had a North Andover Conference on Aging, uh, it ran Friday and Saturday, it was successful beyond our expectations, um, it, it truly, truly was. Um, we had, uh, seven different sessions, one we had to cancel because, the police and fire because of just the reasons the chief was talking about, there were COVID-related illnesses and so we did have to postpone that one to August. Um, we've done a quick look at our participation and significantly more than half of the people that participated had never been to a senior center program before and, um, so that's really very good news for us and, um, so we set it up exactly like a conference, they could sign up for programs on Friday, then Friday night, we had a dinner, um, the dinner then had Ted Reinstein was our keynote speaker from Chronicle on Friday night, then Saturday we had four more sessions and then we had a lunch, an author, Jennifer Fitzpatrick, who wrote a book called Cruising Through Caregiving, she was our keynote speaker for Saturday, she has North Andover roots, her husband grew up here, so, um, so it was really nice to have them come back into North Andover and do that, they're from Maryland and she came up to do that. So, um, it was a great experience, there is a picture, it might be on the next page, as we use this room, um, and here are some pictures, I don't know if you guys can see the pictures, can you sit in there?
Yeah.
Oh, can you see them? Oh, you have a screen down there, oh, okay.
We're not sleeping for the.
I, I, well, I didn't know, you were just engaged in my conversation. So, here are some of the pictures, you can see, you know, in the center there, this room was set up, the room was full, um, for, for a presentation in here, we had three different presentations in this room and had we not had this space to use, we wouldn't have been able to have those sessions because we wouldn't have the space in the senior center to handle the number of people that were there. Transportation, we had a long time, uh, van driver relocate to Georgia and after he did that, we separated that position into two positions, two part-time positions, um, it actually was, it made it easier to schedule when one took a vacation, because what we were finding, if he took a vacation, we generally then would have to cancel transportation because we didn't have drivers. So, now we, um, we've got two different drivers, one driving Monday and Tuesday, one driving Wednesday and Thursday, our van usage is up almost, uh, 50% higher than it had been previously, we've opened that up now to include transportation for, uh, personal errands and for medical appointments and for social engagements outside of the senior center, so we're seeing that, um, that go up, I do anticipate that to continue to grow, grocery shopping is one that we're seeing huge growth, that we used to just go two mornings a week, that we're gonna have to add probably two more sessions of grocery shopping to that, to accommodate the number of people that want it. Uh, we do, as you know, had, uh, on the, uh, capital budget, had a van to purchase and because of the supply chain issues, that van is on indefinite hold, so we don't know, we will not get that during this fiscal year, obviously, we're gonna end that fiscal year in a few days, it's not coming in, so that will be held over, um, and we still believe we are at the most 10 months out before we might possibly see that new van. So, right now, we have a problem, one of the vans had, doesn't have air conditioning and, uh, obviously, we can't drive that during the summer months, so, like I said, for one program, we're gonna borrow, borrow this, we're working on trying to borrow the school's van to try to, to accommodate some of the, uh, the concerns that we have coming up and use, uh, town vehicles, uh, when we only have one or two going that we can do that with, so, so we're working on that. Our friends group, um, we're very pleased with this, they, they've given us three thou, over $3,000 for fiscal year '22, I know Rick gets a extraordinary high amount, uh, from their group, but they support all kinds of programs for us, um, lectures, uh, historical lectures, we had a lecture on the War of 1812, a four-week series on the Cold War, um, craft classes, they donated a TV to us and, uh, different entertainment, so, um, they're an extraordinary group, they are gonna gear up and do some fundraising for the new building and, uh, we'll start working on that this summer and really launch in the fall. And that, and that is what I have.
You have nothing to feel badly about, Rick did a great job, but so did you.
Well.
Very exciting.
Yeah, any questions? We are seeing the numbers come back, I just ran the numbers, um, for this year and compared to the year before COVID, so that would've been 18 to 19, fiscal year, uh, going 18 to 19, uh, we're just about back at those numbers, maybe a half a percentage down, um, back at those participation numbers and we were closed two months this year, so, um, so we're, we're back.
That's great.
I think the, um, program that you had this weekend is just amazing and, um, I didn't attend it and, in fact, this is unfortunately the first time I've heard of it, but I, just looking at it, I think this is really a significant.
Yeah, you should've gotten mailing, we did a.
I might've.
The program was offered, uh, we got a grant, um, and we're able to do a mass mailing to townwide, um, which is really huge for us to be able to do that and to reach so many homes and, um, I, I do believe it's, it's probably the first of its kind of a, a community-wide conference like that and, and our intention is to make it grow.
Really, really, well done.
Make it grow.
And, so do you think, once the senior center is built, you'll be able to, just to be able to conduct that whole session in the senior center, you won't need this room anymore, right, you'll be able to do everything.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yeah, when the new senior center, you'll be able to have those sessions, those type of sessions.
We'll have all the sessions in there, we, we actually wanna grow it into an expo that will bring in providers that, uh, provide items and, uh, different equipment and technology to allow people to age in place and age in their homes and, uh, so we, we plan to expand it.
And I think the, the new programs that you've started are amazing, especially ones that you brought from other, uh, from your former community and, and shared them here, that's just great, you know, congratulations.
No, thank you.
Part of a year for you.
And I, and I do, again, have to just, uh, to, to mention the staff, this weekend, uh, they were outstanding, they worked all weekend, they don't have to, that, that was not, I gave them all a choice and, and they, they were all there, every, every one of them, um, worked on the weekend and, um, they're still tired today and, and also, I do have to, we have two members of the Council on Aging here, they've been a great advisory, uh, board, they were, uh, I would say 90% of them present, uh, throughout the conference, um, some of them even presented, uh, at the conference, their work that they're doing for advocacy, uh, working with the RMV right now and advocacy has been significant and, um, I think we'll see that grow.
I was lucky enough to see in action, although I was only there for the, the lunch at the end, but even just that, what, being able to listen to that one speaker was really incredible and it made me super excited, I hope I can go and listen and participate in the entire thing next year, it's super, I feel like it was actually really targeted for people in my age bracket.
Obviously, Saturday was.
Yeah.
Saturday, Saturday was.
So, I, I'm just really impressed and the commitment of the staff was, um, you know, everybody was excited and enthusiastic and we really, really appreciate you and all the work you guys have done.
Thank you.
To reach the community, so thank you, I can't wait for next year.
Me too.
It's a, it's a proof of, it's about people, the community services and.
Yeah.
This is with a antiquated and short facilities, uh, that you figured this out, you know, with what we have, hopefully, by next spring.
Yeah, yeah, well, if not, we'll be back in here.
Right, that's the mission, not to be back in here, uh, you know, just, just what that portents and I think being able to go into a new facility with this sort of momentum, I, I, you know, what, what a great message, but also what a great payback to the staff and the people that have participated, so, I mean, what a great way to step into it.
Yeah, so we looked at this one as our practice year, knowing that we're gonna go into bigger and better next year, so.
How cool is that?
Yeah, yeah, great way to go.
Thank you for coming, this is why people live in North Andover, because of the youth center, because of the senior center and all the hard work that you guys put into what you do, because it really makes such a difference in people's lives every day, so we appreciate it and thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thank you.
All right, so that ends our governmental reports, we'll move on to licensing, so I will take a motion to move into licensing.
Move open, I'm meeting the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are in licensing, over to you.
All right, great, all right, we got a few things tonight, uh, first, we have an application from James Dumis on behalf of the Trinity Congregational Church for an annual entertainment license, we've got, um, a letter and so forth in here, I don't know, is there anybody here to speak to it? Wonderful.
We were here at the last meeting.
There we go.
Myself and the pastor.
There you go.
I don't know if I told you at that last meeting, but we were sitting over here, it was my first time in front of the select board and Pastor Deborah poked me and she said, if they ask you to say anything, go over to the pulpit.
All right.
I said, okay, I'll go over to the pulpit.
A pulpit can be good in this room sometimes.
Uh, but thank you for the first license, we had our first concert yesterday, it was fabulous, uh, I don't know if you ever heard of the Backstreet Oldies Band, but they wowed the people that were there, uh, they have three women who sing, uh, they do songs like the old Cheryl's groups and those groups, Dionne Warwick songs, things like that and, uh, such talent, they were unbelievable, uh, and they're coming back to North Andover sometime in the summer, at the end of the summer, so, if you're interested in that type of band, just, uh, Google the Backstreet Oldies Band, so anyhow, you advised us to come back and put in for the annual license instead of trying to get a license for each concert, so, we've taken your advice, we've made the application, uh, again, I submitted a letter asking you to forgive the fee for us, uh, it's an ask, we'll understand if you don't do it, but, uh, we're a local church, a small church, we're trying to do something nice for the community and, uh, it's a little bit different than most people looking, looking for a license, have some kind of a financial interest in, we don't, everything for us is going out, we ask the people to come to the concert, it's free, we don't ask them for anything, we don't pass a, a bucket around and ask for donations, we don't even try to convert them. Just give them a free concert, an enjoyable afternoon and, uh, it was 91 degrees at 4:00 yesterday when we started and, as I told you, last year, we did them on the parking lot and it was really, really hot and brutal out there, this year, we've moved to the lawn, we've got some trees and we found some shade and lo and behold, I don't know who was watching over us, but we got this incredible breeze that came through the property across the lawn for practically the whole concert, it was very comfortable yesterday. So, we enjoyed it and we thank you for the license, you have a new one and, uh, I've listed the concerts coming up, we have three more coming, uh, I have a poster, can I share it with you?
Please, go ahead.
That's our next concert coming up and it's on July 31st, it's going to be a, uh, what's it say there?
Clambake, Clambake Five?
Clambake Five, yeah.
Yeah, Matt Arum, Clambake Five, and then you've one.
And then in August, we have For Other Fab, uh, they're a well-known, uh, Beatles tribute group and then we have the 12 Bosband coming in September, they're classic R and B band, so they're a lot of fun also.
I'm gonna ask you something a little bit off message, but I see some of the documents that say Trinity Church.
It's Trinitarian.
It, that's what I've always understood it to be and I thought, did you do a change, a name change?
No.
So, it is the Trinitarian.
It's a Trinitarian?
Yes, that's how I.
Congregational Church. I don't know if you have a Trinity Church, thank you.
I don't think that we do, but I thought maybe that for some reason, the, the church decided to change the name up a little bit, so it is Trinitarian.
Trinitarian.
Okay, thank you.
Congregational Church, yes.
Great. Any other questions for?
I don't.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Select Board Acting as License Commissioners approve the application of James Dumis of the Trinitarian Congregational Church for an annual entertainment license and I'll add to waive the, um, yearly $100 fee.
I'll second that.
Wonderful, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you're around, 20:00.
Yeah, thank you.
There we go. There we go, um, and next up, we have, uh, applications from Colleen Hamilton of the Trustees for Reservation for one-day wine and malt licenses and, uh, for events at the Stevens Coolidge from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, uh, summer concerts, uh, on July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, August 12th, 19th and 26th, we're gonna have lots of music in this town this summer and a, uh, a date night event on July 9th, 16th, 30th, August 6th, 13th and 20th and we've.
I'm here, um, for truly.
Hey.
Hello, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, um, I'm not in town today, but happy to join you all, um, we will actually be withdrawing our applications for August 6th, 13th and 20th, um, we're opting not to have a liquor vendor at that event any longer.
Oh, okay.
But the rest of the dates stand.
Okay. So, we lose the date nights in August, is what you're saying?
Correct, we'll still be running the date nights, um, we just won't have any liquor served at the, the event.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the Select Board Acting as License Commissioners approve the applications from Colleen Hamilton of the Trustees of Reservations for one-day wine and malt licenses from 6:00 to 8:00 PM for summer concert on July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th and August 12th, 19th and 26th and for date night events on July 9th, 16th and 30th.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any other discussions? All set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great series of events, all good to go.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, have a good rest of your evening.
Righto.
Thank you.
Bye now. And last, we have an application for a Common Vitler license from, uh, CU New England, LLC DBA, The Upper Crust Pizzeria located at, uh, 164 Sutton Street and.
Good evening, I'm Gina Venetia, representing Upper Crust Pizza, we're so excited to be here, it's been a long haul, we applied for a building permit back in March, ended up having a flood in the location, so, we got together with the owner and ourselves and we came to update the property, we have new parking lots, new facade, new hoods, new equipment, where in the beginning, we weren't ready to spend that type of money to start, but we fixed it all, so it's a nice, brand-new, beautiful location.
Do you wanna tell us a little bit about what you're offering, your menu, this is your time to be on TV.
Okay, so, I am the construction manager. I build all their restaurants.
You look just like a construction.
Okay, so, Upper Crust Pizza, I'm sure you've heard of it prior, it is totally new ownership, it has nothing to do with the past, we've come away from that, um, I worked for the owner currently now for seven years, I'm sure you heard of Be Good as well, I built all their locations, all up and down the East Coast, it's a very family-oriented restaurant, Anthony Akle's the owner and he is all about community, he's all about Anthony Akle's the owner and he is all about community, he's all about giving back, he's all about family, customers, employees. It's just one big family, that's what he calls it. So, he has a bunch of different entities and this is one of them. It's part of a larger group of different restaurants. Andover is a wonderful community. Lexington, I think, was their last location that they opened and they wanted to move up more north. And they found a good location and they wanted to beautify it and bring it to the community. I don't, it's not going to be so much, they're anticipating more takeout and delivery than sit-in. So, it's a very small space, but it's great pizza. And we added chicken, so we have a great chicken sandwich.
Mr. Chair, the application is in order with no conditions. It does, and things may have changed since the 22nd, but it does still need sign-off by building, for the building permits, certificate of occupancy, antesting of the inspection of the final fire alarm system, sprinkler system, and exhaust. Laurie could tell me if that's been completed, but I think that's what I still had outstanding on our list.
Exactly.
So, any action tonight would be subject to?
All of the happening, yes.
And the timeliness of that, any sense?
So, the restaurant's completed, we're having a little hiccup with equipment and I can't do any final plumbing until the equipment's in, the HVAC and the amp will come as soon as they're in. So, hopefully by the end of next week, after the 4th, I should have everything done, inspected, hopefully inspected, and ready to go. Building Department's been in there a few times, electrical sign-off is done. We're ready, we just need the equipment to move it on.
We, since we don't have a meeting until July, I guess the middle of July.
Yeah, I just pass it pending, pending all other inspections being completed.
That's what the building inspector said, you should go tonight and get it in, so I rushed, I got the paperwork in and.
Yep.
As soon as I get the equipment in. Supply chain is awful, I'm waiting on two fryers and as soon as they hit, then all the equipment will be brought in and I can do my plumbing, gas lines, my HVAC, and finally amp'sel and then the fire.
Great.
Subject to?
Yep, subject to all of the inspections.
I would move approval and I should have said, "You're a great construction manager, you've got, you know, you seem to really be on your game," but.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other input, questions? All in favor?
Yeah, welcome.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Richard's Association.
Oh, yes.
Don't worry, I'll get her.
I'll drop my card off to you, yes, I will.
Yeah, yeah. They got the early spiel already, it's good, Janice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, new business, we're going to move on to a discussion with National Grid about their planned power outage that happened on June 10th and affected some businesses that weren't expecting it. I believe that they're on remotely.
Madam Chair, could you just?
I am, can you hear me? I'm sorry, hold on one second. Item F.
Yeah, I'd like to take a motion to.
Sorry, okay. We have somebody here from the Walk for Hope. So, hold on one second, we'll be right back with you, National Grid.
Thank you very much for taking me out of order, I appreciate it. My name is Bob O'Terry, actually, my office is at 811 Turnpike Street in North Andover, been there over 35 years. Debbie Helms, our executive director, was also supposed to be here today, but given the nature of what we do every day, I unfortunately think she's dealing with an emergency today. We are here for a request for our sixth annual Walk for Hope. And first of all, let me begin by thanking you for agreeing for the previous five years. Two years ago, it was virtual, in spite of being virtual, we still had over 300 people participate virtually. Unfortunately, there's a great need for what we do in terms of raising much-needed funds for suicide prevention and mental awareness, mental folks with mental illness and related issues. The event we're planning this year is exactly the same we've done for the last five years. It's going to be started at Willow's Professional Park, actually, it starts at my office, which is 811 Turnpike Street on Willow Street. Then we go all around Flagship Drive, which of course is the industrial park. On a Saturday, October 22nd, which is great because there's very limited traffic at that time. And the two condo associations have been very helpful to us because they let us use all the parking. So, there's no on-street parking, so I believe this has been reviewed by the North Andover Police and we've never had any issues. We have a lot of people who volunteer and we help coordinate the traffic and we've never had any issues. The sponsors for this particular project are the same as been for the last six years, the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley, which have been around for over 40 years. And I'm not sure if you know, our call center is located right down the street here in Attorney Ramsey Barawi's office, right across from that great candy shop. And we are expecting, obviously, to be deluge because as you probably know, the 988 Suicide Prevention Hotline goes online in about, I think, two or three weeks before, because of the difficulties of people finding the numbers and things of that nature. And Congressman Holton, who's a congressman, of course, in this district, was key in getting that particular legislation through. So, we're going to be needing, obviously, much more assistance and help to take all those calls that come in, which are literally, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, thousands a month to deal with and getting calls from out the entire Merrimack Valley area. This is a walk, it's not a run, there'll be no alcohol served and obviously, it'll be subject to, hopefully, we're past the COVID restrictions, but if the governor deems it necessary, we'll follow whatever restrictions that are required. It's basically an event from 8:30 to 11:30, it's fairly a quick event. There is music, we try to keep it as upbeat as possible, given the topics that we're dealing with and really have been very successful. We've had close to 300, 350 people participate and we expect pretty much the same this year. So, we would request that approval for that walk again this year, subject to those particular restrictions. And I apologize Debbie wasn't here because Debbie is, she does tremendous amount of work dealing with very stressful situations and like I said, I believe that's probably where she is tonight instead of being here. But we appreciate all your support through the years and look forward to another successful walk.
Madam Chair, I would move approval to this very worthy and necessary clause, especially the times that we're in with all the rates of people who have trouble are up. You do God's work, thank you.
So, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking me out of order.
Are you here for the Declaration of?
I am.
I welcome, we will also take you out of order. Unless you want to stay, I mean.
It's been pretty interesting so far. I always like hearing Rick talk about the youth center, I was on his board for a decade and it's just an awesome organization.
Benefit to the community.
So, I'm John Lenhoff, I'm really Rick Coco's surrogate for this. He's mentored me through the process of getting an event together for the Common and I've been the coordinator for the Fourth of July event. It was, our first year was two years ago, it was video-only. Last year, we did it live in the drizzle and this year, we're hoping for good weather and it's again on the 4th. Our state reps are going to read the Declaration of Independence and then there are some other local leaders and musicians who come and read other speeches from our history and play relevant, somewhat relevant music. So, I have an outline of the program if I, if you want to have a quick look.
It was really lovely last year, I guess it did a nice job.
So, this year, I got a grant from Mass Humanities that covers some of the expenses of generating yard signs and we've upped our music game a little bit with some musicians that are accepting a small fee to pay. So, it's, should be a good, a good event.
Any questions for John?
Sure, I'll go ahead.
Has outlined.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We look forward to it, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, you're all. Hope to see you there.
Now, we will go back to item A, which is a discussion with National Grid. Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, my name is Shamat Kamal, I'm from the Customer and Community Management Team here from National Grid. We did have a scheduled outage that took place on June 10th and it was for a job that we were doing for Avalon Bay. Unfortunately, due to our system failure, we were not notified about customers on High Street and that is National Grid's mistake. It was not on our mapping systems, it didn't show up that High Street was part of the outage. And due to that reason, we were unable to notify those customers. So, we are truly and gratefully sorry for all the businesses that I know and I've heard that lost a lot of business that night. I know the Celtics game was going on and it was a miss, it was a mistake on National Grid's behalf.
So, what is being done for those businesses?
I'm sorry.
What's being done, what is being done for those businesses by National Grid that lost a significant amount of revenue and product in that evening?
So, we do have a claim, we do have a claims department, they are ready to take in any claims form that they, that comes in for this specific outage. We will look through all of the claims, we have all of, the claims department is alerted about what happened. And we're, everybody is ready and alerted to make sure that we honor whatever damage has happened.
Could I ask, I mean, you know what businesses were impacted, is that correct? Let me ask that, do you know what businesses were impacted by the fact that you provide a service to them?
Do we, do we know what businesses exactly were impacted, is that your question?
Correct.
So, I know there was a couple of restaurants that were impacted and I have, I know from nine to 37, I believe, High Street was impacted that we did not notify.
All right, so.
I know there are specific businesses, meaning restaurants.
Well, what I'm, what I'm driving at here is why not be proactive with this? So, I think kind of to, you know, Mr. Valencourt's observation here, you know the businesses who were impacted. I would ask that there be a proactive outreach to them rather than putting it on their shoulders to opt in. I would ask, because of the timing and so forth, that you proactively send something to them as to how they can expedite this process. So, it's less on them to start the process because they may not know the door in and I just think that might be a little more efficient. Is that kind of what you were getting at, Dick?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And also, the timeframe, I mean, these are not, you know, corporate kind of businesses. These are all owned by individuals who, you know, make a living off of these businesses. And that night was a significant night because, as you said, there was a, there was a big sporting event on. I know one of the restaurants had a very busy evening that night and had to shut everybody down. I mean, that impacted them collecting their receipts that night, it impacted their service. I, I'm hoping that there is an outreach to these businesses and I'm hoping that we can come to a very amicable solution for these businesses because it was a significant event that they had no input to or no notification of. And it's just very shocking that, you know, National Grid would let that happen or have that happen, so.
And it was difficult because they actually saw their customers leave and cross the street and go to someplace that was open. I mean, it's just.
No, I completely understand. We're 100%, we understand that we completely failed in that department. As for the outreach, we are able to do that, it's just that I don't know exactly who was open that night and who wasn't.
It wasn't even just, it wasn't just that the ones that were open, there were ones that were closed and came the next morning and found their refrigerators had, were full of spoiled food. So.
Some of the nine-to-five businesses that are in there may have had, you know, impact to their businesses, so I would, I would echo that we.
Just contact them all.
Yes, you'll kind of do the right thing and reach out to all of those businesses. My other sort of related question is, have these businesses been given contact information, name, phone number for someone specific that they can call to talk to about it? I mean, yes, you have a big, huge claims department, but I would love to be able to go, I mean, I've made one trip past those businesses and I would love to be able to go again and say, "If you need anything, please contact, you know, this person." And I would love to be able to give them that information. So, is there a specific sort of representative for them?
That would be me.
Okay.
I've been in touch with Melissa and Lori about it. We've been going back and forth regarding some of the businesses and High Street, what exactly which customers were out. Lori and Melissa are more than welcome to give out my phone number, they have it. It's my direct cell phone number. And for any customer, I will make sure that they're taken care of if they do give me a call.
Thank you very much.
So, we do have a few businesses that already received notification that their claim was denied, should we have them refile?
Please, yes, if we can have them refile, if you want to get that to me specifically. And I'll reach out to the claims department and ask exactly why they were denied or what the reason was. If it was due to this outage, if they fall within, you know, that specific outage range that we did not notify, they should, they completely should be honored.
Okay, and.
I would like to know why they were denied and why they now have to refile, why their application just can't be. Not even resubmitted, just brought back up in your system, however. I mean, that's appalling that they've been denied based on a huge mistake by National Grid. So, I would like to see that more done for them if, and not have, put the burden on that business owner again to have to refile.
Because it's more time and.
Yeah.
It's time and money for these small businesses that are having to reapply to you and, you know, I think that, and I appreciate you coming and taking responsibility, but, and why we're so sensitive to this is that these businesses have been through Columbia Gas and they have been through COVID. And now, they're just starting to get some legs under them and this happened on a busy Friday night, so.
No, I completely understand. Would Melissa or Lori be able to at least give me the name and the phone number for the customers that I could give them a call personally and see what happened?
Yeah, I can do that, that would be great. And actually, if we could follow up as well, because we do have some additional questions about landlord filing versus individual filings. Because unfortunately, for some of these businesses, the landlord holds all of the electrical accounts. And so, we've been working with the individuals to quantify their losses, but we could use your advice on how to move forward on that.
Okay, so we can definitely get together with the, some of our customer claims, I mean, the claim representatives to get in touch and we'll all be on a call and make sure that we get that going.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Yep.
And of course, the untold expenses, the town employee staff that are now spending time to track this all down and run this through too. So, that's also something to consider. I know there's nothing we can do about the reimbursement there, but it's just, again, you know, we have a town staff that has to reach out and work with the businesses to get them up and running again and get these processed, so.
I understand, I mean, we are extremely sorry from National Grid to the town of North Andover. It's something that shouldn't have happened and it was very unfortunate.
Do you think we could get an update in like a month? I'd like to hear back and even at our next meeting in July to find out, I'd like to know how many have submitted and how many have been paid.
Yep, if that's what you, yeah, we can, we can, I'll get in touch with our claims department and get you a number of what has happened thus far.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
So, we will move, let's see, we'll move on to. So we will move, let's see, we'll move on to item B, which is to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town of North Andover and the clerical unit.
Great. So as you know, we have decided to ratify one-year contracts with both our clerical union as well as our professional libraries union. Because we are doing a compensation study for both of those divisions, we want to make sure that we implemented the cost of living increases for them. And so what we're voting on tonight is just that one-year contract with each of those divisions. And again, that will only be COLA and no other, no language changes at all. And the COLA for the next fiscal year is one and a half. I was gonna say that, but I had to look at D to be certain.
Did she mouth it to you?
She finished my sentence, which I love, so...
Any questions or comments?
Will we see this again next year then?
You'll be hopefully sooner than that. We're hoping, because we'd like to get it summed up for the last two years.
Sure. Madam Chair, I move the Select Board to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the town of North Andover and AFSCME Local 2978 Clerical for a term of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, we have a one-year contract.
All right, Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board to approve the collective bargain... Were you gonna update this? You updated them both. Yeah, yeah. Madam Chair, I move the Select Board to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the town of North Andover and AFSCME Local 2978 Professional Libraries for a term of July 1st, 2022 through July 30th, 2023.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you to everyone for working on these contracts. I know you guys have been really busy, and you've made a lot of progress. All right, we are moving on to appointments. So, oh, did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry, Ashley. Ashley's not here, though. But every year, they do the free fitness on the Common, and it will be Tuesdays and Thursdays, and one day is Zumba and one day is yoga. And I always love driving by and seeing all the big groups on the Common, and I commit to going to one of them this year.
Wow, you are on the hook. Wow, I gotta put the motion into that.
And the operative word is free, because we can't allow people to put spot businesses that are supposed to be for money. So this, and she's always done it for free.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, we welcome back the summer fitness program to the Common. And now, we'll move on to appointments. I always get confused when we go out of order. I like jump around. So I will pass over to the Appointment Subcommittee. We are bringing up two members for zoning, right?
So we are recommending to move Michaelis and Steve Seidi, who are currently associate members, to full members of the zoning board, as two full members have vacated their spots. So they're both served well, you know, as associate members, and they're both excited about moving toward, to being full members, so...
I imagine having the institutional knowledge of being associate members, right?
It's helpful.
Any questions? Take a motion.
So I move the approval of the appointment of Michaelis and Steve Seidi to, from associate members to full members of the zoning board. And I'd also like to express my appreciation to Ellen McIntyre, who's leaving the board, and she was on for 27 years. Incredible run on the zoning board, so...
And she's had some tough issues.
Yeah, sure. Lots of 40Bs, lots of...
Yeah, a lot of work.
40R overlays, so yeah, thank you, Ellen, for your many years of service to the town.
You have to add in for terms ending.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good point. All right, let me make a friendly amendment to that for terms ending, and I'll go there.
June 30th, 2025.
June 30th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. And next, we are going back to reappointments, is that correct, for the boards and committees for their next terms, right? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, we submitted a list of reappointments for those members that are there. Their terms will be ending on July, June 30th, 2022. So we submitted a list of recommended reappointments to the full board.
Before you do that, I would like to talk about the one that was not reappointed and...
Well, there were a number of them that were not reappointed, but yeah.
So, and one in particular that I'm aware of wasn't even offered an interview, and what was your reason for not reappointing someone?
I just didn't nominate him.
Without reason? No interview and just without reason?
Maybe clarification. We're reappointing tonight. Tonight is the appointment, so we haven't, we just made our recommendations. We just, the reappointment's tonight. So we are, as a board, are reappointing. I, we didn't reappoint anybody. We're reappointing tonight.
We are, but my understanding was that someone was informed that they, who's been doing it for 10 years, without interview, that they would not be reappointed.
That's correct.
But as you just said, you cannot not reappoint.
I said, we weren't recommending for reappointment, that particular person. We were not recommending them. And I gave him, courtesy of a phone call, to let him know that, and I gave him ample opportunity to ask any questions. He chose not to. So we, that's, we're proceeding with the list that we submitted.
So, point, Madam Chair, so our action tonight is literally to either approve the, is to vote on the reappointment list as it is.
Right, and then people can reapply, right? Reapply?
Okay.
Or someone could make a motion.
Sure, absolutely.
So...
Can you make amendments?
Yep.
So I would move that the Select Board approved the reappointment to all boards and committees as presented.
I would second.
Motion and a...
And I would like to amend that by adding CJ Gange, who has served on the Historic Committee for 10 years. He has a letter of support from Kathy Ziska, who's the chair. He has a degree from Boston College in history, and I see no reason not to reappoint him.
So how do we...
There's a second on the amendment.
So without interview and a recommendation from the chair and someone who clearly has a background in this, we're just not going to do that. The board is not going to...
And if you don't hear a second, then you revert back to the original motion, and you can take action on the original motion. And that would, without a second, we can't move any motion, anything else forward.
It's quite disappointing, to tell you the truth. And I think because of that, I think we need to put a new process in place to open it up so that we all can attend these sessions, that we can interview people and do, after 10 years of service, somebody deserves the right to know why they're not going to be recommended. So I would ask that at a future meeting that we go over that, because I would like to start attending.
But they are open meetings, and anybody can attend.
I know, but I did talk to the town manager about the logistics of having a city member of the Board of Selectmen attend as well for notification. I think we've got that worked out.
Right, so basically, it's if you have a subcommittee of two, right? And a third member of your board attends and wants to participate, whether it's through public comment or in any other way, shape, or form, you now have a quorum of three, which is a Select Board meeting and a violation of the open meeting law. So if we know that a third member of your body is going to attend a subcommittee meeting, our best bet would be to post both a Select Board meeting and a subcommittee meeting at the same time, so that you don't have any violations. Lori and I have been talking about how a lot of our policies probably need to be looked at and updated, and that's a good summer project for us. So we'll start kind of combing through those and thinking about, you know, what we can do to kind of cement some of that up. But, you know, when you have a subcommittee and you have a third member attend, it can lend itself to complications with the Attorney General's Office.
So I guess I also look at this go, you know, we've, I think all of us have experience sitting on that, and there's a reason why we have a subcommittee is because they are the group that has the focus and kind of connected to what's going on in the community and makes the recommendations to us as a board. And I think there was a good recommendation number of years ago, actually, it came from you, Rosemary, to share the resume and the contact info so that all of us have the opportunity, which we've had. So that's, at least from my perspective, unless I've got some particular personal affiliation or knowledge, I'm going to rely on, I'm just saying in general, the function of the subcommittee. So kind of where I sit, it seems to me the subcommittee does what it's going to do. Over the course of time, I'm sure we're going to have disagreements. How can you not, right? It's a community of 30-some thousand people. We're always going to have disagreements, you know, at some course. But, you know, I've only been on this board five and a half years, only been through this five times, but it seems to work pretty well overall. And, you know, we have lots of people who have experience. We have a lot of people that have volunteered, and I think what's great about it is that we see that, you know, continue through, no matter what the discourse is or what the issues are in the community. So I guess, don't mean to be on a celiac way here, but just saying, I think where we stand tonight, I'm comfortable with the process we have. Go ahead, fine, take a look at it, but I'm comfortable with the process. I don't know, you know, how others feel with it, and that's why I'd be happy to go ahead with it as is.
And I just, I, you kind of took the words out of my mouth, like that the subcommittee is there to make a recommendation, and we're sort of relying on them. And I think, my thought is that it's good to rotate too and give people an opportunity to volunteer.
There were a lot of people that have been reappointed for years longer than this, and he is a younger person. We're always looking to bring in younger people into our boards. But I think the most disturbing thing is, what was the reason?
But Selectmen Valencourt called him to discuss, and he didn't. There were no questions, correct?
No, well, go ahead. I wasn't on the phone.
There were no questions.
Well, I would imagine that there was an element of shock there for someone of good standing to just not be reappointed and...
I mean, he, there was an opportunity to call back too. I mean, it wasn't done this morning, well, this afternoon. It was done a few days ago.
But did you also tell them that that is your recommendation, but it's still subject to the approval of the board?
I absolutely did.
Because I think some people think that that's not the case.
My almost exact words were, we were not recommending for reappointment, so...
We, meaning? You're not recommending, but that doesn't mean it's a vote, did you?
No, well, I don't know how he interpreted it. I don't know how he interpreted it, but it was, the word was recommended, recommending.
But I'd like to, okay, that's, but I still see, just because the board doesn't want to open this up to the public, it is a public meeting.
It's posted.
They're a publicly posted meeting, yes, absolutely. Anyone can attend.
Anybody can attend.
Yes. A board member could attend and not participate. They're welcome to attend as a member of the public. But if you started to deliberate as part of that process, then you would have created, you would create an issue.
But you found a solution to that as well.
Which would be, if we knew a board member was going to attend, we'd have to post both a full Selectmen's meeting as well as a subcommittee meeting at the same time. Yes.
So I would second the motion.
Thank you, Dick.
For the first motion, I have a motion, and I have a second, so I'll take a vote on that. All those in favor?
So this is for the first motion. The amendment didn't get a second.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I think we're on my appointments.
Yes, we're moving on to your appointments.
From my boards and committees. So my plan, moving forward for next year, and I'm going to write a letter to all of my appointments, is to let them know that I'm going to post all of my positions and just see who's out there. I don't know who's going to be out there. It'll be really interesting. I'm encouraging everyone who's already on the committee and commission to apply. I'm going to interview everyone. I think it'll be a really positive way for me to meet people. Unfortunately, even though I've been here three years, COVID really kind of impinged me in getting to know a lot of the committees and commission members, so I think it'll be a good way for me to do that. So my plan is to send the letters to the people who are up next year, this summer, so that they'll know that that's the process I plan to take. So it should be exciting, but that's my plan. But it doesn't affect this year's appointments because I'm not going to start until next year. So I have Board of Recessors, Brian Perry, Planning Board, Alyssa Koenig. You'll remember, I just put her on last year, so she's only served a year, but she had filled someone's position, so she's continuing. Board of Health, Joe McCarthy, and then I actually have a new appointment for Board of Health. They have two openings. Her name is Jennifer Abu-Ezy, and she is getting a one-year appointment because she is filling a vacancy, and she is a school nurse. So we're excited to get that kind of vantage point. We have one more open position on the Board of Health that we have posted again. We're really, really hoping to get somebody with an engineering background because of septic, because they do deal with a lot of different types of issues with, you know, when you think of public health, you think health, right? But they're also dealing with septic, food and milk, mosquitoes, and so many other types of issues that everyone who is applying right now is very much in the medical field, and I think that's really been the limelight. But they actually do a lot of other stuff too, and so we would love to see kind of a little bit of my more diverse candidate.
But did you know Mr. McCarthy, he's your...
He's a chemical engineer, yes.
Yes, so he is an engineer, but it's a little, it's different.
It's a little bit different, yeah.
But I would imagine a safety manager, a safety engineer would also be good. Anyone with OSHA experience or something like that.
It's a little different. I mean, he's great, especially when it comes to stuff, like dealing with trash, dealing with the waterfront. Like, he's got a really interesting background for that, so having him has been amazing. And, I mean, we have an epidemiologist right now, so we've got a really great board. But that one spot, we're, you know, we're really looking for somebody to fill kind of that niche.
Environmental.
Yeah, it would be, we're just not really seeing that yet, so we're going to keep trying. But, yes, we were really excited about Jennifer. They loved her and they interviewed her, so we're very excited to have a new volunteer.
She's also in CLM.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, that being said, any questions, comments? No? I'll take a motion. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. And we are moving on to special town council appointment of KP Law through June of 30, 2023, because our town council left us and has moved on, so we, for right now, to fill the gap, right? They're always our special counsel.
So once a year annually, our bylaws do require us to reappoint special councils, so we have two. We use one for labor and then one just generally. Yeah, so they've been a huge help, both labor and KP during this time of transition, but we always keep them on the, keep them on the books just in case we need them.
And this is separate from our, okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
All right, then I will take a motion for special counsel.
So I would move that the Select Board approved the appointment of the firm KP Law as special counsel through June 30th, 2023.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. And then I'll take another motion for Norris Murray and Peliquin.
Move that the Select Board approved the appointment of the firm of Norris Murray and Peliquin as special counsel through June 30th, 2023.
And I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. And we will move on to consent items. We are accepting a community compact municipal fiber grant in the amount of $15,561, which is going to the senior center, correct? And that's fiber, like cable.
Yeah, underground cable, yep.
Which is great.
Not serial, no.
So that'll get all their electronics up and running and all, excellent, okay. So that's great. And then we have an ARPA State grant in the amount of $160,000 for a community health needs assessment.
Just for sharing with Andover.
Andover, right.
Yeah.
Everybody with the, it's not really an acronym, but what ARPA stands for.
Oh, sure, that's the federal funding that we're receiving for COVID relief.
No, but what the letters?
The actual letters, do you know?
No, never mind.
American Rescue Plan Act? Oh, there we go. She just went to a webinar on it yesterday on the floor, so she's...
It's just sometimes that we get so wrapped up in government language that we speak a foreign language to those who are at home.
But yes, this is for us to use with Andover to do a community health needs assessment of both communities, so we're sharing a vendor, which we just awarded the contract. It's exciting.
And we are also accepting donations to the youth center for the summer shows on the Town Common that Rick told us about earlier, and that is from Tamira Carlson, Convenient MD, the NAMs Pachac, which is the North Andover Middle School parent, what are they called? PTO, yeah. Why is it PTO? Never mind. And James Prendagast. So we thank you for all your generosity. Everybody loves those shows on the common. So I will take a motion to accept the consent items.
I'll move that the select board accept all consent items. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. And we will move on to our open session minutes of June 6, 2022. Does anybody have any amendments or changes to that?
I'll move that the select board approve the open session minutes of June 6, 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, and now we're back to all business and the naming policy for the town buildings. So Alyssa and Laurie presented that to us last meeting. Does anybody have anything that they wanted to change or add or suggestions, discussion? Does anybody?
I think it's a good idea that we have one. I went, I read it, I was like, I don't know if it is specific enough to help us, like.
Well, I would, I think for me, the naming of any government building should have the highest level of scrutiny. We can't just name a building for a really nice person. It's got to be, it's such an honor that it's got to be someone who's done something honorable or, you know, so often the buildings are named after people who've served and lost their life in the military or, it's just got to be pretty special because we can't, and we aren't going to the past to see someone from the past because we don't know them, who would be even more worthy than a modern day person. I just think we need to set the bar pretty high, if at all.
So this doesn't, this isn't particular to that, right? This is just the process to get there.
When you started to say that, I was thinking, I get that, but I think we just need to be really careful.
Yeah, I guess what we're nervous about.
Staff-wise, is that we have new assets coming on.
Yeah.
And some fundraising that I think is going to be started. And the thought that perhaps there could be people who would like to name rooms or gyms or other assets, and we want to make sure that we have a process for that so it doesn't just happen, which it can. You know, this room or whatever else, when we build new things. You know, so we're happy to, if there's another community's one that you all like and you want us to look at, we're happy to do that. But I think the danger of being silent to it means that when people don't know who has the authority, they may just take the authority. And we may just end up with something named before we know it.
And that's just, so if we were to adopt the way I read it, it's still, everything comes before us.
Everything comes back to you, yes.
Right.
That's probably the most significant piece of it, right? Is that you can't just go name something, it has to be brought.
It has to be, and it has to be given public notice.
Yes, anything over $500 has to come back to the select board now.
So to address the issue of people calling about benches or trees or rose bushes, rather than go through that whole public process of 14-day notice or anything, those items that are valued under 500, they would still come in front of the board, but you wouldn't do that whole advertising and notice and a public hearing or public comment period.
That makes a ton of sense.
Yeah, so that way it addresses the smaller items, because we do get those a lot. And thankfully, with the timing of those, we have been referring people to the Recplex because we're hoping that that's going to have some kind of fundraising element that you can purchase, whether it's benches, bricks, whatever it may be. And they should come before you, whatever that fundraising group is. They should come before you with their fundraising plan.
Right.
For you to approve it.
So if they start a fundraising plan, someone's got to just pull them aside and say, you need to bring that.
Yep.
I just, we just don't want to be selling little bits and pieces of our town.
No.
That's what we're afraid of.
Yeah.
So this forces them to come in front of us.
Just for example, Patriots Park, which is at Olmsted Park, and for those who don't know, that's a very impressive landscape architect. He also designed some of the homes in Newport, Rhode Island. And we share company with the public, the Emerald Necklace, I mean, all these, Central Park, all these wonderful parks, Olmsted did. And being on that committee, people who did donate, we had put together a book in the library, in the rotunda, that just would list this family in memory of their grandmother and, as you said, a rose bush. But there were some groups that literally wanted to tag every tree, every this, and that, it ruins the look. So, and it worked out well. You know, I think people like to have their donation acknowledged somehow, but it was, it was like a memory book, so to speak. So just tossing that out, that, thank you for bringing this forward, and as Dicky said, I do agree on this, that we just, we don't want to be selling little pieces of the town off, and it's hard to pick someone who's so worthy of such a title that, that maybe we don't know of some other people that are worthy, but we just don't know about them for whatever reason. So it's tough, it's a tough decision.
And just because somebody brings forward a recommendation doesn't mean that we need to accept it.
Right.
So I think this policy puts the authority to us, or somebody, and specifically to us.
We can name the jail cells after Chief Gray, if you want. I don't think we're going to have big bidders on those.
We'll honor, with plaques.
With plaques? Chief Gray was here.
I do find that when you do have new buildings coming online and then the friends of those groups get really excited, they do tend to have these big ideas about, you know, naming things, and it's just good to have something in place before that happens.
So let me throw one sort of thought into this all, and that is, maybe not so much today, but the world coming ahead, I'd say it, you know, the virtual world, meta world. And should we in some way maybe consider virtual memory opportunities? You know, we're talking about physical things here, but a lot of what is in a town now is represented virtually, right? And there are things, the memorials, that can be virtual. And so I'm not exactly sure what the world's going to look like, but I wouldn't be surprised if 10 years from now, somebody comes up and says, this thing that's only in the Ethernet, we want to memorialize, that's part of this town. So maybe in some way we should think about potentially incorporating that, looking down the road a little bit, because all of a sudden, we could be faced with that.
I guess maybe get one on the books and then.
Well, you know, but that's exactly how it happens though, you know? All of a sudden.
That's a big, that's a big picture, like, it's important.
In many ways, speaking to what you were just saying, sometimes it would just be nice to have, let's say, heroes or people who've done magnificent things or found a cure for cancer or something that came from town or unbelievably talented in music or whatever, is that we put that on video for us just to share with the kids and senior centers and things like that, where people can actually see those heroes or those who have done tremendous work in their profession or whatever. I think, I love the fact of showing people that have done wonderful things and teaching our kids that too. So it's kind of a great idea, you said in a roundabout way, a little differently how I said it, but.
So we could put that as a goal for next year.
Right, right, okay, fair.
A goal for next year. Are we okay with the policy as, for this, in particular for towns and buildings?
I am, but subject to be amended if we can think of something refer law.
Yeah, it's always.
Yes.
All right, so I'll move that the select board approve the policy for naming town building and assets as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a naming policy. It's exciting. And lots of fun stuff coming on. Okay, so we will turn it over to our town manager.
I don't think I have much. Just a reminder that if people do need assistance with filling out their opt-out program, we are available to help. So just call the office or come to the senior center or to the town manager's office, and we've been helping people opt out. It's very simple, so don't hesitate to come by. Right, any of those places, we're all happy to help. We even helped Chief Gray opt out. We did. It happened, twice. So we are full service around here and happy to help, so just let us know. But other than that, it's quiet. I know we had some volunteers at the commerce market this weekend, some town volunteers. They were very excited.
This has been an amazing program. I love it, we love it. We're happy to have anybody who comes to help us, and I'm still going to challenge all of you to come help some weeks.
We'll be there.
I'll get on you. But it's been great, we've had, you know what the best part is? It's like so much better for us to have a couple of additional people each week, which is what it's working out to be versus like one week where we have, you know, 10 extra hands, so.
I'm so glad.
Amazing, very happy, thank you very much.
Good.
And the first couple of markets have been awesome, so.
Good.
Yeah.
I got good feedback from the employees too, that it's been a very positive experience. They could have maybe had it not be 93.
We would much prefer if it's not.
Yes, but they really enjoyed being there, so it's been great. Right, so.
But it's been great, thank you.
No problem. Other than that, it's busy and we've got a lot going on, but I don't think I have any other updates.
Oh, Fields.
Oh, Fields, okay. Sorry, yes, I almost forgot, look at that. So we do have a date coming up, mid-July, on one of the Fields lawsuits, and that's the adverse possession case. And then we have, and that case has to do with who actually has possession and ownership of the land, one small portion of the land. And then we have another date coming up, 45 days after we get the transcript on the land court case. We received the transcript about 10 days ago. So that case will be coming up soon, and that will be the closing arguments. So we should be seeing that wrap up fairly soon, and so hopefully we'll be seeing some progress on the Rec complex. I know the group has been meeting and talking with the architect, and we're all looking forward to see that moving forward, so.
I think that would be, everybody's waiting patiently to see some progress on the Fields. It would be nice, it'll be a nice addition to that area. Let's see, any select board comments or updates? No? No, quiet. Fourth of July, fireworks, July 3, right? July 3. And the road race is on the 4th.
Well, we know they're going to read the.
Oh, that's right.
Independence, Declaration of Independence, yep.
Yes, we have. Time of year, it's great. All right, well, then I guess we will move on to the board reorganization. My time as chair has come to the end.
Well, it's been wonderful having you as the chair. And so, you know, sitting to your left here, I'd like to offer, sitting somebody to my left, kind of a flip experience of a couple of years ago. I've seen Janice really move from all of us, you know, when we're here the first day of like, oh my God, right? To really hit a groove, and I'd like to offer Janice Phillips' name as chair for the incoming year.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do I throw something at you?
Keep going.
You see that light that just shifted?
Thank you. I look forward to the next year.
Do I have a nomination for licensing chair?
I will nominate Dick Valencourt, and can we do two at once? I will nominate Dick Valenc... Sorry, I was reading the appointments up committee. I will nominate Chris Nobley as licensing chair.
I thought I heard some sweat over there to the right.
I'm moving ahead.
I have a motion and a second. Would you like to continue as licensing chair?
Absolutely, if you'll have me, I'd be happy to do that. It would be an honor, truly. Thank you.
At least you weren't doing it remotely like I.
That was so hard. They threw papers. That was so hard.
That was like a two-year, that was a two-for-one, so I feel like I'm really.
I had the papers, piles of papers all over the place because there were so many papers. But we got through it.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Hopefully I'll never go back. I have a motion and a second for licensing chair. All those in favor? Aye. All right. And do I have a motion for appointment subcommittee?
So I'll move to appoint the former chair, Laura Bates, and Dick Valencourt to our appointment subcommittee place.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
And the last position I have is for clerk.
I would move to recommend Rosemary as clerk.
You could have stayed back if you want.
Oh, no, I've got a second now.
I have a motion and a second.